Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the May 18, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, please take the role.
Thank you, Chair Smith, and welcome back. First, our staff support today: County Council, Assistant County Council Jeff Muns, Clerk to the Board Tony Marinick, Role Call Commissioner Savis.
President.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this is May 18. Does anybody remember what that date was?
It was Mount St. Helens Day.
Thank you. And I was on a little vacation east of the mountains at Lapine or Band or one of the other areas, and we could see this plume way, way far away. And then by the time we got home, everything was covered in ash. That's how I remember it, yes. And I would like to thank Commissioner Scholl, Vice Chair, for chairing in my absence. I was sick. He filled in wonderfully. Thank you very much for that. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. If you would please convene as the Housing Authority.
Yes, I will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority of Clackamas County.
Joining you online is Housing Commissioner Ann Leenstra. Ann, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Very good. Good morning. Commissioner Leenstra, this is a Housing Authority of Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda, Item 1, Approval of Amendment 1, Adding Time, Scope of Work, and Funding to the Construction Contract with Nomarco Incorporated for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Wide Flatwork Project. Amendment value is $148,560 in 60 days. Contract value is increased to $476,500 for 240 days. Funding is through capital fund federal grant and Housing Authority local project funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Home Forward for Continued Resident Services Staff to Expand Programming for Facilities Living in Public Housing. Agreement value is $114,950 and 13 cents for one year with five one-year renewal options. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Fund. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Leenstra has moved we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. It has been seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Apologies. Chair Smith.
Thank you very much. Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Commissioner Leenstra, thank you for showing up today.
You're welcome.
Motion passes. I will now recess as the, or adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and convene as the North Clackamas County Parks and Recreation District.
You're now meeting as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. This is a public hearing. Item 1, First Reading of an Ordinance to Amend the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District System Development Charge Capital Improvement Plan. Mike Bork is the Director of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good morning. To review, this is to add three projects onto our Capital Improvement Plan and SDC list, going back to our 2007 plan, because that's the last adopted one. We're only adding these three on as an amendment to that, but to do so requires an ordinance change. And the reason that we want to do this is we would like to start spending SDC money on these projects, and that's what this ordinance would allow us to do.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Questions by Commissioners. Paul.
Yes, I am fully supportive of this. I just want just one clarification, Mr. Bork, and that is that the second line, Concord Property Park and Community Center improvements, is that the full, is that project inclusive in the SDC, in this action we're taking, include the full project, which we don't have the resources for yet, for the full community center build out? Or is it separate, or just a portion of this?
It's just a portion. So, the dollar amount that's listed there, again, all of those, those are just estimates that we need to list as part of the ordinance change, but they're not necessarily reflective of total project costs. These are estimates of basically this first phase, which is the playground, the park, the parking, all the civil work, and some of the work on the building, such as HVAC and new entryway, et cetera.
Right. And, you know, just for the benefit of my colleagues, yesterday when I spoke about some of the projects that were outlined in the formation of NCPRD back 30 some odd years ago, Community Center in this area was one of those projects. So, it's plain to see we're making some progress on it, but I think the full vision is yet to be realized.
Yeah, and that's what we were talking about yesterday with the, having it informed by the system plan, that we're getting ready to kick off.
Right. And what's the balance we need to complete that project?
Well, it depends on what the full scope is, because that needs to be re-talked about by the community once we get the first phase done, essentially the library and everything around there, the park, the playground, and those improvements, and then have a revisioning of what else is desired and needed in the building. Because there was conflict on things like the gym, whether there should be a new gym or not, how the, you know, how some of the rooms should be used, things like that. So, that was our intent, was before we kicked off Phase 2, which would probably be funded through a bond in the future, we would re-scope and redefine, because again, we're working off of three or four-year-old data, or five-year-old data almost as it is. So, when this is finally completed, would probably be time to re-engage the community in that engagement process to figure that out.
Okay. Well, maybe that's a topic for our next NCPRD Board meeting. I think it's important, because we put a lot of value, stock, time, effort in that community project with the task force, the Concord Task Force. And I would hate to lose really a lot of the momentum in that input. So, I want to make sure that what's conveyed is just a clarification rather, you know, are we still in the same place? But I don't want that disregarded. I wouldn't want to hurt their feelings for the tremendous amount of hours they put into that project.
And that's how we've approached even this project, of trying to honor everything that's been done, but the basic fact is, back when that work was being done, that was when the two buildings were connected. And by separating them, it really changes a lot of the needs and uses of the building, which is why, again, we want to get this project finished and start using the buildings concurrently and, you know, shared on the property, and then work with the community to essentially reconfirm what everybody sees as next steps, but also have a chance for new input if needed, because we would be putting together a future bond package.
I'd love to have that as a topic for the next NCPRD Board of Directors meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mike, because we had a really great conversation on the way up, and he informed me that you're getting a kit from the Xerxes Society for butterflies.
Yes, Butterfly Pollination Kit.
Yeah, and I just have appreciated, again, because it is my bias, that you really are kind of really making our park system pollination campuses, and I'd really like to see that.
Yeah, we have quite a few nature areas that aren't necessarily developed into parks, and those are really good areas to promote those kinds, whether it's bee pollination or, you know, monarch butterflies, I think is the specific one that we are getting from the Xerxes Society. And I'm not even quite sure if we've determined where it's going yet, but I know I was signing the paperwork yesterday. That's what we were talking about for getting the kit. We were awarded that. So, we're very excited. Thank you.
Yeah, and the other thing is that the maintenance is comparatively speaking relatively low, because sometimes, because they're native plants as well, so you're not using a lot of other materials that you wouldn't necessarily need.
In fact, we're prohibited by putting the Xerxes kit in, where you're signing that we're not going to be using pesticides and other things in that area. So, yep.
Nice. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Bork. When can we anticipate seeing a site master plan for the Concord School property that will include the footprint of the library?
I, that's a good, I will defer to the county administrator, because I'm not sure what you have and haven't seen as part of the, on the library.
Well, is there, is there, does there exist a site plan for the Concord School property that shows the, how the library will be situated?
Yes.
There is? Okay.
We can get something to you.
Yeah, I would really enjoy taking a look at that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take the first person who has signed up. I don't see anybody out there. Tony, do we have, I don't see anybody in person who would like to testify. Tony, do we have anyone online?
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have anyone registered to speak. If you would like to testify on the ordinance being considered by the Board of Directors, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received.
Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further questions by the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, Chair, I didn't anticipate, and a very valid question by Commissioner Scholl. It just, it just occurred to me when he said that, that we, the Board of Directors has really not had really, this Board of Directors has not had a presentation about that, so maybe it'd be worthwhile to not only just add the Concord piece, you know, to the agenda, but maybe a little bit of an update of what it is currently for the edification of my colleagues.
Would you like that at the June 21?
You are, and we've also added layover discussion of yesterday. This board asked a lot of questions, and we're going to bring those forward at that evening meeting in June, so it already sounds like it's a packed agenda.
Perfect.
So, I would eliminate, hey, we have our three items, and every one of them is going to be a long discussion, I bet you. So.
We'll work on putting all that together.
Thank you, Mike. Any further? I will now close, I did close that. I will entertain a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second. It has been moved by Director Scholl. We move the ordinance by title only and seconded by Director Schrader. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Tony, please assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance will be numbered 03-2023, an ordinance amending the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District System Development Charge Ordinance.
Any further discussion? Commissioners have any proposed changes to the amendments or the draft ordinances at this time? If not, the second reading will be Thursday, June 1, 2023, at the Board's regular scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, coming forward. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is a board discussion item, and it is the tolling pause draft op-ed that you had asked for, Commissioners. There is a, you have, you are emailing the copy. It is posted online. I'd like to invite Trent Wilson from Public and Government Affairs to come to the table. Trent, would you give a quick update on what has transpired since the Board last talked about this, the process that has occurred, and then we'll seek your guidance today if you'd like to approve this draft, Commissioners? Go ahead, Trent.
Thank you, Administrator Schmidt, and good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Yes, you requested that we do a group op-ed with our jurisdictions, and we've worked with a small group, including Commissioner Savis and several mayors from the cities that would be affected by the proposed tolling program along I-205. That small group created the draft that you see before you today, and, you know, we don't do op-eds like this very often, so it's kind of a new process for us. So, because of that new process and because it's been a sort of a group effort, what you see before you today is the draft we are seeking your approval on. Not a lot of room for edits, obviously, because of the process that we've had, but we've had your good voice through Commissioner Savis to create what's here today. We have a good list of folks who have already signed on today. They have a noon deadline. We're missing two cities from that group, and I'm working really hard to try to make sure that they have, that they're aware of the deadline, that they get included into this, into this letter. So, seeking your approval on this op-ed this morning.
Thank you very much, Trent. I'm sure Commissioners have a copy and have read it. Commissioner Scholl, you up first? Go ahead.
Commissioner West was.
Oh.
One half second.
I'm wrestling for that.
Trent, what cities have signed on so far?
Lake Oswego, Oregon City, Tuolleton, Gladstone, and Canby.
Okay, thank you.
Did you say Westland?
They are not yet. I'm working really hard on that one.
Are we still working with them?
Of course.
Can you rattle that off really quick again?
It is Lake Oswego, Oregon City, Tuolleton, Gladstone, and Canby. So, of the 205 area cities, we're trying to get Westland and Wilsonville to jump on here at the end.
Okay. Go ahead, Ben.
I appreciate the op-ed. I know it had to have a lot of different voices in it. I wish it was a lot stronger. I, and this is my, I know there's a lot of voices beyond Ben's, just this board. I feel like it's not clear enough that there's strong opposition. It seems to be very collegial in a way. Maybe that's where we need to be. I, and I wish it gave just a little bit more credit also to what the pause being really originated by the work of local governments and that collaboration, that unified voice from local entities.
I think it kind of did.
I found it, I don't know, just my personal opinion, I just found it to be a little, it could be a little bit, it did, but it could have been, there was room. I see you nodding. There was room for it to be a little more robust in its tone if it's going to the public.
So, Trent, when you were working with these other entities that signed on, what was their comments about it?
That's interesting.
I mean, I'm happy to defer to Commissioner Savis, who was in that small group. There was a good discussion about like, what does this message need to be to the public? That, yes, this pause is a win, and that there's more work to do. We got here because of local involvement. We need to keep local involvement in the front. So, the theme of local involvement is spread throughout the language here, and I think Commissioner Savis can attest, we have different cities with different feelings about where tolling could be on this, so have a group effort here. It needed to be closer to the middle, but it's still pretty firm. Like, we are excited about this pause, but we are going to keep our proverbially foot on the gas.
Do you feel like it was really clear and like, implementation is still full steam ahead? There's so many people, like, I was talking to at a house party in Charbonneau, and they're like, oh, we got a pause, we're all, we're good. It's not a bit, and like, no, just in the collection, but this implementation is full steam ahead. I don't know if it, I don't know if it missed that piece specifically. I don't know. You know how I like to get a little fisticuffs, so it's fair enough.
Yeah, and I understand, I understand that, you know, we could have used harsher language, but as I've always said, this is not our last bite at the apple. We will have multiple, multiple opportunities to do this and many more letters. That's just my opinion. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I think Trent characterized it pretty well. I would say that, as I look at what the op-ed says today, it says, you know, thank you for the pause, and by the way, we do want to be involved as local jurisdictions. And I think there's more power in us collectively as mayors, jurisdictions, you know, the county. There's more power there than there is to be gained, the fact that we're coalescing around this, and that's the signal out there. All of us are saying this than there is really in the, in maybe making it a lot stronger. I, too, prefer to have it a lot stronger, but we have to compromise, and again, the power we gain by those multiple jurisdictions, and I hope that Westland's on board here pretty quick.
I think one of the other things that came out, and we try to infuse this a little bit here, is that there are a lot of questions about what this pause does mean, and so we tried to create that here, you know, including its own like, single sentence paragraph, what does this mean? Because there are a lot of questions, and there's going to be efforts to like, answer some of those questions, including for y'all, the C4 Retreat coming up, where there will be a little bit of a deeper dive into some of these things, and maybe you can come out of that with something a little more firm about what does success look like for you, you know, at the end of this pause.
And there may be an opportunity for us to be hard-hitting as we get closer to the hearings and the establishment of such, and we can do it then. I think the tone is appropriate for today, and that's all we can do is make a decision at this particular point in time. Commissioner Scholl, you have a comment?
You mean, the op-ed is appropriate for today?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay. The pause, my concern is that this pause actually gives ODOT more time to put together operational plan for tolling, to put together the contractors, to put together the gantries and the infrastructure, but at the same time, people need to be reminded that this pause gives us more time to fight tolling, because I for one will never utter a word to concede to tolling.
Mm-hmm.
I can't do it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, the fight will only be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Mr. Savis?
Yeah, I just want to, I guess, maybe this is a perfect opportunity, and want to say that as this conversation is going forward in more detail, and we wrangle through, there are other messages in that letter, is about finding funding solutions, that we recognize that at least I for one, I'll say that here on public record, I for one, support express lanes, right? Is that tolling? Technically, it is tolling. So, I think we need to be careful if we all agree that express lane and having free lanes, that kind of model is something we want to support, because we have, as a board, not exactly this makeup, but this board has sent a letter, a document, to ODOT saying just that. We support, we support express lane and free lanes, right? And that the dollars go towards capital improvements as well, right? That's the letter we conveyed before. If we're still there, great, but I think here, whether it's today or the head nod, but it'd be valuable to know, because that might be one of our, it should be one of our strategies going forward.
Agreed.
As we find solutions. So, if we could, if we all agree with that, there's head nods, then I will carry that, that we're still in that place. But I will say that wholesale, he's saying tolling against tolling, got to realize that express lanes is a form of that, and I call it a diversion-free form of tolling.
Okay.
Chair Smith, real quickly. Yeah, again, that's reasonable. You're being reasonable, but the idea to toll all lanes.
That's right.
To all people at all times is not reasonable, and that's what I will fight.
Yep.
I think we're agreement on that. Commissioner West?
I was not on the board when that decision was made, and so I think there are other solutions potentially than even an express lane that haven't been explored, and voices have been silenced, and real work of being innovative has been stifled. So, I'm not committing to just one path.
Oh, yeah, of course.
As a Commissioner, so maybe there are other avenues we can take to help deal with the transportation funding issue, but I'm not in any position to even say where I will concede at this point, because we haven't even allowed to have a voice at the table. I'm curious, where will this op-ed be potentially placed, and why do we choose this specific, whatever specific media outlet to place this op-ed? And then I'm just curious how many words you get, kind of the bones and the structure of like, what's allowed with an op-ed timeline, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we're aiming for the Oregonian. We've been in contact with their editing team, and so they know that we would be sending something in today. Outside of the Oregonian, we obviously have access to Pamplin, and they generally accept and consider these op-eds, too. And so, we have a few options. We like the Oregonian, because it has that statewide, you know, value, whereas Pamplin can sometimes be localized, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the question before us today is, do we approve this for submittal? Paul?
Yeah, I think the answer to that is yes. I turn my light on, because I want to say one other thing that's important before we get off this train of thought on, on solutions, you know, when we go toward the solution base. If we do get the response from the Subcommittee, the Transportation Subcommittee, to be included, I think we ought to have a discussion about all the different ideas we ought to be proffering, but this is one of them. And the right reason I say that this is one of them is because we've heard some legislators say, well, get over it. We, you know, I came from a state that had tolling, and it was all fine. Well, then I could really say, well, frankly, I did, too. But we didn't toll all the lanes of all the interstates unprecedented in the country, so taking that little piece of tolling and, you know, bait and switch to some degree, but taking that all the way to the extreme of tolling all the interstates and in the state, I'm sorry, that's, that's never been done before. So, just because we agree with one form of tolling doesn't mean they have a free rein to just take this punitive approach.
Yeah, I agree. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the op-ed as presented by Trent Wilson this morning.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval to submit the op-ed for publication, and Commissioner West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Trent, for your hard work on this. Now, all Commissioners are going to sign this. All Commissioners here will sign this, yes, and you're going to work on Westland?
We're working on Westland and Wilsonville.
And they can make the decision who they want to have sign it.
Thank you.
Whether they want just the Mayor's or their entire council, it's really up to them.
We'll work on signatures, but being an op-ed different than like a letter or a statement, this normally just says like, you know, who the authors are, it's like, by, and what we have templated right now, if you agree, is like, by Clackamas County and the cities of whomever is.
Okay.
A little different than signatures, but if that's an okay or an acceptable approach, that's what I would recommend.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
The Board of Clackamas, the Board of County, Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners.
Board of Commissioners, yeah, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you, Trent. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda, Elected Officials, Item 1, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item 2, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Anita for the Digitization of Their Archival Film. Agreement value is $12,000. Funding is through the City of Anita. No county general funds are involved. For the County Clerk. Disaster Management, Item 1, Approval of Corrected Amendment Number 3 with the City of Portland for UASI-20 funds. The amendment will add $11,000 for Building Damage Assessment Trainings. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, Item 1, Approval of an Agreement with the Freshwater Trust for the Henry Creek Culvert Fish Passage Project. Agreement Value is not to exceed $100,000. Funding through County Road Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item Two, Approval of a Contract with Dark Horse Construction LLC for the Canby Markham Highway at Low and Elder Road Intersection Improvements Project. Contract Value is $739,927. Funding through Community Road Funds, Transportation System Development Charges, and House Bill 2017 Safety Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Health Housing and Human Services. Item One, Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Oregon City for ADA ramps and sidewalk improvements. Total Value is $432,600 for one year. Funding through Federal Community Development Block Grant. No County General Funds are involved. Item Two, Approval of a Revenue Grant Agreement Number, Grant Amendment Number Two from Oregon Department of Education for the Healthy Families Oregon Program. Grant Amendment decreases the value by $47,293.78 for a total value of $2,547,368 for two years, funding through Oregon Department of Education. No County General Funds are involved. Item Three, Approval of a Revenue Amendment Number One with Clackamas Workforce Partnership for Prosperity $10,000 to Increase Workforce Services in Clackamas County. Amendment Value is $10,000 for a total value of $159,999 for one year, funding through Clackamas Workforce Partnership. No County General Funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will, any, any further comments on this? Nope. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Commissioner Savas has moved to approve the consent agenda, and it has been seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Next, if you would please convene, is the Water and Environment Services Board.
I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water and Environment Services Board of Directors.
This is the consent agenda for Water and Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water and Environment Services. One item, Approval of a Board Order Authorizing Purchase of a 2024 Freightliner 114 SD Truck with Owen Equipment Hydro Vector Combination Upfit through an Oregon Cooperative Purchasing Agreement with Premier Truck Group of Portland. Total Contract Value is $560,601. Funding through Water and Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Funds. No County General Funds are involved.
Questions or comments? Does any commissioner wish to pull this from the consent agenda? I will entertain a motion. I move we approve the Water and Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Director Schrader and seconded by Director Shaw to approve the Water and Environment Services Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Director Savas?
Aye.
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director West?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Gary, what's next?
Would you please convene is the Development Agency Board.
I will now recess as a Water and Environment Services and convene as a Development Agency Board of Directors.
Next is the consent agenda for the Development Agency. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Development Agency Consent Agenda. One item, Approval of a Disposition Agreement with Anchor Health Properties LLC for the sale of Development Agency Property for $850,000. No County General Funds are involved.
Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second. Commissioner Shaw has moved for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you please take the poll?
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Director West?
Aye.
Director Savas?
Aye.
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is Public Communication.
Thank you. We're just humming right along. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communications at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. I do not see a single person in the room. Tony, was there a blue card in the basket?
There was not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online who would wish to testify?
Madam Chair, I'll begin with Charles Ormsby. Mr. Ormsby, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes. Mr. Ormsby, you are muted. Mr. Ormsby, you are still muted. Mr. Ormsby, we cannot hear you at this time. If you would like to submit written testimony, please write bcc@clackamas.us, and we will share it with the Board of County Commissioners.
Do we have anybody else, Tony?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Let's call on Charles one more time. Obviously, a technical snafu, which we've all experienced.
Mr. Ormsby, I am unable to unmute you from my side.
Okay, we're going to move on. Yeah, yeah. Charles, if you can hear, you could submit your testimony by email and show up at next week's meeting, and we'd be more than happy to hear from you. I'm sorry we have a technical difficulty keeping you from participating. Any others?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, that is the end of your list?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I will close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I'd like to share good news of the good work of our employees and our programs at the county. And today, I'd like to share, the Clackamas County has been nominated for a National Association of Government-Defined Contribution Administrators Leadership Recognition Award for Retirement Plan Participation Communication and Education. Now, what is that about, you're wondering? That is about, these nominations are based on measurable results that lead to sound improvements in public sector retirement plans for public employees. Our nomination includes metrics showing improved participation, increased contributions, and more. This reflects the work of our employee Human Resources Benefits Analyst, Billy Hurley, who helps our Clackamas County employees prepare now to meet their retirement goals. So thank you, Billy, for your excellent work on behalf of the county employees, and we will receive notice in October if we're going to receive this national award. But we've been nominated, which is a high honor for Clackamas County.
Yes, it is, Martha.
Next, our CCOM-
Did you know about that? No, I didn't. This is the first I've heard of it.
That's, that's very cool.
It's very good, thank you. Our CCOM 911 employee has once again saved another member's life of the public. We call it CPR Save. Dispatcher Liesel Grolbert received a call last month that a teenager collapsed while playing volleyball with her friends. The friends called 911, and Liesel helped on the phone, helped the friends apply an automatic external defil, def, defil-
AED, AED, AED.
AED. Defil, defil, oh my gosh, I can't say it.
AED.
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 Thank you. And used it to help resuscitate the young woman before the fire department and the paramedics arrived on site. The teen is alive, was stabilized, and is doing well. So thanks to Liesel and the bystanders on the scene, we saved a life. So thank you, Liesel. Our employees every day literally are saving lives of members of the public. That's the good news I want to share. Just a schedule reminder, next week, the county commissioners will be meeting with, as the Budget Committee, all week long, so there will not be a business meeting next week, May 25th. The Board will convene at the next business meeting on Thursday, June 1st. That is my update today, Chair and Commissioners.
Well, thank you very much. We are now at Commissioner Communication. Up first, Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. Last Saturday, I attended the Wildfire Prevention Fair at Timberland Lodge. That was an outstanding event. We saw Sandy Fire, Hoodland Fire, the Forest Service, ODF, PGE, Clackamas County Disaster Management were there, all giving information from their organizations on how to prepare to defend against wildfire. And I'd like to thank the staff and management at Timberland Lodge for their hospitality. Also, at the fair was a booth from the Ant Farm folks in Sandy. And what the Ant Farm does, they have some fuel reduction teams that if you contact the Ant Farm, they'll send them out to your farm, business, or home to help you reduce fuels for a small fee. The Ant Farm does need equipment for this team, chippers, small track hoe, chainsaws, and et cetera. So if anybody out there is inclined to give some help to the Ant Farm, maybe you have some excess equipment, contact the Ant Farm in Sandy and see how you can help. Also, on fire safety, now's the time for us to be thinking about fire safety. If people would go to the Clackamas County Disaster Management website, you'll learn how to prepare for disasters, and also how to sign up for our public alert system so you can be notified by text, phone, or email should a natural disaster occur. And finally, parents, one more time, we were lucky last weekend in water safety in our county. Other counties weren't so lucky. But again, keep your eye on the kids when you go to our mountain lakes and rivers, the temperature of the water is still very cold, and the flow is very high. So be very careful this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just want to just share my appreciation for the board and some, a decision we made, was yesterday? Yeah, yesterday already. Wow, this week's gone by fast. It helps close the book on one of the problems or challenges or incompleteness of, of a ballot measure that was put on the ballot as relates to libraries back in 2008. So it is with a lot of, lot of pride that we actually fix problems and honor promises. That's just a deep thing to our, you know, something that builds trust. One of our core values is building trust with our citizens. And, you know, we have a couple more to go, and I hope to make progress there as well. Some are easier than others, some are more complicated. The most complex one is NCPRD. That's one of the most complex ones. And it, it just, you know, coming from a background of special districts, I can tell you that it has been, they are extremely effective generally, water sewer, for example, school districts, you know, fire districts and so forth, in delivering those services. And most parks districts are, you know, pretty successful. The history behind the formation of NCPRD is literally, I have boxes of documents that date back 11 years and more, but my experience, about 11, 12 years. So I, I hope that we can work together to navigate solutions, to put it back on solid footing and make them successful. As I said yesterday, I am indeed supportive at the right time when they are set up and on good footing to put it on the ballot, to change the governance. I agree with yesterday's, I think consensus agreement, that when we did this in 2014, or something similar to this in 2014, there was too much, all lumped together that made it confusing. I think the sequencing is something we ought to be very strategic about, to establish again that good footing and, and get closure on our relationship with the city of Milwaukee as well. But I just want to say, you know, thank you to my colleagues, thanks to staff, thanks to all the dozens and dozens and dozens of library folks that have been very, very active in, in seeing this closed out. So I'm very happy to do that. On the tolling front, just to remind my colleagues, Chair Smith was not here on Tuesday, but I want to make sure that people know that there's a big meeting, another tolling meeting Monday morning. I will miss part of the morning at that meeting in Portland, and I'll be joining you thereafter. That's the special districts, or the Districts Day on the budget. And then on Tuesday, the luncheon at the OCBA, where I'll be a panelist on tolling as well, that I've had and, you know, cooked up here for a couple, three, couple, three months. So that's, that's happening, and so I won't miss much there either, but I did want to make you all aware of that, and hope we have a constructive budget discussion next week.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, it's been a busy week. One of the things I wanted to talk about, let folks know that I also attended a meeting on the coast with the Spirit Mountain Community Fund, that is the Grand Ron Tribe, and I have the honor and privilege of being on that board. And we essentially look at grants that we are giving to members of our communities across the state. It's not quite as large. I was talking to Chip Lazenby, who's the Chair, and he said, you know, one of the reasons why what we do is so important on that particular board is, we're not as big as the Oregon Community Foundation, but a lot of times, the grants that we're giving is actually building capacity for smaller nonprofits that are really working and getting off the ground and pulling things together. And so, yeah, I don't have the list in front of me of some of the more recent grants, but I think in the near future, I'm going to be mentioning some of the things that that group does to really help our communities. And I do know that we've had recipients here in Clackamas County, Clackamas Women's Services, and the Children's Center, and other nonprofits have benefited from those dollars. And the other thing I've been, been doing is that, you know, we, I had my Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee meeting yesterday that I chaired with NACO, and it was one of the best presentations I've heard in a long time. What we talked about was an initiative that the Florida Chamber of Commerce is doing, and they basically call it the Prosperity Project. And one of their goals is to cut childhood poverty in half. And basically, they have a blueprint to do so, and it's been extremely, extremely successful. They use, do deep dives into the information and the numbers, because they found out that over 700,000, close to 800,000 children living in poverty in Florida's 983 ZIP codes. So essentially, what they did was really see where those pockets of poverty were, you know, are located, and they've been working together as a business community to really work on this project to lift children out of poverty. And so I'm going to make sure I send all of you the links to this, because I've been thinking about prosperity. I've been thinking about how we help our businesses now that we're moving out of a pandemic to expand and grow, and how do we make sure we're getting employees connected with employers? They actually have a wonderful visual that talks about the paths to prosperity, and they also actually give you a list of 10 root causes of poverty, so lack of employment opportunities, inequities in education and workforce development, unaffordable and unattainable housing, insufficient transportation options, disproportionate health access and outcomes, food insecurity, this was interesting to me, inaccessible and unaffordable childcare, unsafe environments, imbalanced outcomes in the criminal justice system, and lack of recognition and access within a community. So this is unique for me, because this is the actual, the whole Florida, the whole state, and the chambers getting together as a business community, working with the public sector, and to really actually help solve these problems. Which brings me to an item that we've been working on with our workforce team, and that is, we are going to be planning, I've been working with Bridget Daisy and a number of other folks from the business community and workforce, where we're really going to be pulling together a summit, I believe at the end of June, with the business community, talking about accessibility to childcare, because one of the things that we're finding out is that a barrier for people to- Because one of the things that we're finding out is that a barrier for people to be able to work, I've experienced this with my own kids, okay, with my own daughter having to help her get kids back and forth. And it's going to be a conversation with the business community, and we're inviting some of the larger businesses that actually have childcare on campus. One of those is Siemens, for example, in Wilsonville that does that. And just to see, how, how do we manage that? And how do we, how do we do, have a business model, you know, so, so we can really get to find out where our childcare deserts are? Because we do have areas in this county, it's very difficult to get childcare. And what we can do is a business community and pull together to kind of address that. So, so the employer gets what they need, a good workforce that's trained and able to get to work, okay? And then the employee has a decent living wage job, and everybody is a win-win. So, I just wanted to let you folks know, my colleagues, you'll all be invited to this. I think it's going to be a great conversation, and it's been pretty exciting to be able to work on something like that because it is a barrier to people. And our job, I believe, is to move people out of poverty as much as we can, to give them a hand up, you know, not a handout, as we always say, but to really address this with our business community in a really solid, direct way. So, that's it for me for the day, and thanks for letting me wax eloquent.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner West, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. It is great to have you back.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome back. Vice Chair, thanks for leading us in our Chair's absence. We had a good time.
Good.
And I think we got a lot of work done. It's been a good week. It's been very productive.
Just for the record, I watched part of it. I watched as much as I could.
Hopefully, you also got some sleep, and looks like you're prepared.
I did.
Okay, good. I, I am really proud to be a part of this county. I, I think Commissioner Schrader and I were just reflecting on this this week about, I don't think sometimes we take a moment to pause and see all the really cool things we are doing
Oh, yeah.
in a way that is in contrast to what's being done in much of the metro area. The point in time count results, not just as a one-off for one year, but the trend year-over-year of a decrease of thirty-one percent in the overall homelessness, and then another forty-five percent in those that are chronically unsheltered, is, is really, really spectacular. And we just have a different culture here, and that is leading to better outcomes. And just a couple things that I just was thinking about this morning is, I went on the Canby Center's website, and I was just like reviewing a little bit about what they're doing, just so proud that in rural Clackamas County, the preventative work they're doing to fight poverty on a real humane level that really finds the dignity of the individual and then provides those services that they need to prevent mental health illness, suicide, help kids in school mentoring, programming, food, clothing, in this very community-oriented kind of approach is really cool. And then yesterday, we got to be a part of that success and future envision by, by gifting them sixty, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? That's a giant asset to Clackamas County, and less people will be poor, less people will be homeless, and more people will be stable in a great, thriving community because we made that a priority and found the right partners to do that with, right? And so, I'm proud of that work. We are driving around with Commissioner Savas and just excited about the work at the Veterans Village and how duplicatable it is. Right next door, we're going to do a bunch of more cottage-style living transitional housing. It's, it's, it's in process, right? It's happening. And it's so good that other counties want to do it too, right? It's replicatable. We're talking about, in its infancy, and it's starting to get some legs under it, how can we build a recovery campus or center as a county visionary, right? Like, how can we bring and fill those care, the gaps in care that are necessary that we all have seen, we all talk about, that we all are concerned about? But in Clackamas County, real action and planning and vision to do some really legacy stuff in this space. And it is really exciting to be part of a group of people that want to, like, do big visionary things and take on big tasks. So, I just wanted to, like, reflect on that for a moment because it is, it's impressive, and I think we're going in the right direction as a group. I, I do want to speak a little bit to the NC, I'm going to pivot away from that, but the NCPRD, that is quite the acronym. The NCPRD, I, I agree a lot with the sentiments of this Board this week, Commissioner Savas. To me, it comes down to simply stewardship. Before it's passed on to an independent tax district, were we good stewards with it and did the best we could to get it on sure footing? And so, I'm not opposed either to the potential of it being an independent taxing district, but I'd like to pass the baton on in a way that makes it successful to move forward to whoever is on that future special districts Board. And it's about simple solutions, it's about stability, it's about working within the scope of that district and helping it overcome some chronic issues that have kind of been there for a long time. And then, I am, when I come back next week, I'll be a naval officer. So, I take the oath of office to join the United States Navy in the reserves this weekend. I'm excited to do that, just one more way to serve the public. I'll be serving in the Navy as an officer, but working as a nurse here locally and wherever they need me, possibly globally. But it will be a great opportunity to still serve as a, you know, full-time county commissioner and a little bit of nursing at OHSU, but I'm really excited to take on that additional role as a United States Naval Officer. It's exciting. And, yeah, thanks for a great week, guys. I had a good time.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I had a great time watching you on Zoom. And thank you for carrying on in my absence. I don't wish, I was sick. I wish, do not wish that on anyone. I just want to turn our attention to next week is Budget Week. And this is the most important duty we have as County Commissioners, and it's imperative that Commissioners attend it. I mean, this is our charge. Our budget keeps us whole for the entire year. Our budget supports all the programs that the public demand. It keeps our twenty-five hundred employees operating. It keeps them funded with all, all the charges that we tell them to do. And frankly, the public expects us to be really on top of our game next week. We will be meeting on Monday with a special districts budget. On Tuesday is the larger budget, where we will have an additional five members from the public who serve as volunteers on the Budget Committee, according to budget law. And they provide wonderful insight because they are community members. So, they have a different lens than we do. But it'll be, I'm sure, give or take, good conversations with all the budgets involved. I look forward to that. And Commissioners, please show up and on time so we can do the work we're charged to do. Thank you very much. Seeing no further business?
Chair Smith?
Yes, sir.
May I have just a couple of seconds?
Yes.
I failed to mention, at the Wildfire Prevention Fair at Timberline, Timber, PGE has invested four point five million dollars in a series of cameras that can see three hundred and sixty degrees. They have an infrared capability, and they can pick up a camp, a fire as small as a campfire in Clackamas County, triangulate the exact location, send a message or a text to our first responders so they can act on that fire immediately.
Wow.
Yeah, I didn't know about it, and PGE demonstrated it. You can look at the, look through the cameras via a laptop. But this was a surprise because, you know, PGE has been working with us to try to mitigate the potential for fires with putting some of our distribution lines underground. And so, this, this is called the panel system. It's very exciting, and I think it's going to have a huge impact on reducing wildfire in our county. So, PGE, thank you very much.
Yeah, Portland General Electric has been a good partner with us ever since the ice storm. And the underground lines you're talking about, Commissioner Scholl, is we have partnered with Portland General Electric for a five hundred million dollar grant through the federal government to make that happen. And PGE needs a governing body to help make that application for them, and so staff has done that. They got turned down last year because of wording, believe it or not, of wording. So, they're going back redoing it, and we are very willing partners to help our community in Clackamas County do this. And it's just, yes, it's very exciting to have a partner like that. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, on that note, I don't know if it's the same exact program or cameras, but there was a, apparently, a lightning strike in Lane County. Cameras picked up the fire, and they, they put it out almost immediately or promptly and limited the fire damage to a half an acre. So, that was just a couple days ago.
That's amazing.
Boy, it is. You know, the technology has just come around. The awareness has increased so much since that catastrophic fire that we had in September of 2020, which none of us will ever forget. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I, I hope we don't have another year like that, like we had last year. That was probably, and you and I went to visit
We did.
those areas out there, and it was pretty, out in the Malala area and SK, it was pretty devastating. But I just wanted to mention one more thing that I forgot to say. Tonight, Channel Six News at five and six, they're going to have an investigative report on the fentanyl crisis.
Oh, good.
So, I just wanted to get that so we all know about it. So, if we get a chance to watch it, it might be, and let the public know that it's out there.
KPTV has interviewed both myself and Vaheed, and it will be featured on the point in time count at ten o'clock tonight on KPTV.
All righty.
So, they came and they went to Vaheed's house, interviewed him, and they came here and interviewed me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to watch.
So, there's a couple things to watch on local, local media today about Clackamas County.
Good for you. Yeah, you're shaking things up. Yay. We're sure chatty today. That's my fault.
We missed you so much, Chair.
But we have time. That was a beauty thing. Seeing no further business, before the Commission, we are adjourned, and thank you.